Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting of January. Happy New Year to everyone. This is our Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, January 3, 2022, board meeting. And I will tell you that what a day a difference makes, right? Yesterday, we're in the 70-degree weather. Today, we got wind gusts of 47 miles an hour rain, and the temperature is steady dropping. So everybody, please be safe as we enter into this new year. And welcome to everyone. With that, I will call on for the invocation Commissioner Tony Stewart to do the invocation and the pledge. Vice Chair.
Everybody, please. God, we thank you for this day, God, this day that you have made, God. Thank you for gracing us with the opportunity to enter into it. Thank you, God, for carrying us through last year, God, and thank you in advance for all of the many things that you're going to do this year. God, we pray for those who are battling COVID. We pray for those who have lost loved ones. God, with the temperatures and rain today, God, we pray for those who are without shelter. We pray for them, God. God, I pray for each and every commissioner here today, that you would give us wisdom, guidance, and clarity. I pray that we would be the servant leaders that you have called us to be. And God, I pray for each and every person in Cumberland County. Pray for their health, their strength. God, I pray, God, that you would continue to cover this county, God, that we would be all that you have called us to be. And for that, God, we say thank you in advance, in the master's name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank the Vice Chair for that awesome prayer heading into the new year. With that, we will go to the approval of the agenda.
Seven.
It's been moved to second for the approval of agenda. All those in favor?
unanimous.
All right. I'm sorry, do you have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
I went right on through that. I'd call on the County Manager, Ms. Amy Cannon, for the presentations.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. I thought it was timely to have Dr. Jennifer Green, our Public Health Director, to provide an update as our numbers have increased as a result of the holidays. So welcome, Dr. Green.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, we will get started, as usual, with our data update. And this data is from the CDC's data tracker. And we pulled this data down yesterday, but the data tracker has not been updated because of the holidays. So this is data from late last week, last updated on Thursday. So from last Thursday, the previous seven days, there were 13,000, more than 13,000 cases here in Cumberland County. As you can see from the map on the left, nearly the entire state is red. So we're in a community of high transmission. Our cases per 100,000 is 409.83. And for context, around just before Thanksgiving, that number was below 100, 100 cases per 100,000. So we've significantly increased our number of cases. Our case positivity rate is at 19.2%. We want that number to be closer to 5%. So those two metrics together put us in the category of high transmission or red, and we've had 511 community members die due to COVID. So this chart, it's been a while since we've looked at this particular chart, but I thought it was timely to look at our testing numbers. This is just the estimated number of total tests that we have week over week in Cumberland County. And so this, the bar on the very right is always an underestimate because it's not complete for the week prior. But you can see that we've had an increase in number of people getting tested in the last several weeks. This chart looks at our cases over the last, actually since April of '20, and so since the beginning of the pandemic. And I'll make a couple of points here. So at the very end, on the very right side, you can see the dramatic increase in cases in the month of December. That little dip that you see is likely the last, prior to Christmas, where people aren't getting tested over on Christmas or Christmas Eve. So you see a little bit of a dip, and then it goes right back up immediately after the Christmas holiday. The other, the peak that you see sort of right in the middle of the graph is last January. And then you can see we declined right after Janu, or through the month of February, we declined. We're fairly low throughout the summer. And then that first peak, or that second peak, is that Delta variant. And then we sort of saw a decline in the fall, and then we can see the numbers going right back up again. This is our hospitalization trend data, and it sort of follows that same pattern, where we had a sharp increase of hospitalizations last January, December, and then a decline over the, decline over the spring and fall, and then an increase due to Delta. And then we see the decline again in late fall, in the late fall, and then now we're seeing an increase in our hospitalizations again. This is an update of our vaccination metrics for Cumberland County. So of our, and I've highlighted two numbers here in particular. So for our total population, we have about 60% of our total population fully vaccinated. That includes people who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. And then for our population that is eligible, we have about 65% of our eligible population vaccinated. So that's everybody ages five and up. And the CDC is recently pulling together data on those that have been vaccinated and boosted. And so that data is a little bit preliminary, but about 10% of our eligible population has been boosted. So updates on Omicron or Omicron. So far, we're still getting some data out of South Africa, the UK, and of course, the US as well. But the initial data indicates that it spreads much more easily than the original SARS-CoV-19. We're still learning about if it spreads more rapidly than Delta. Early indications suggest that is, that it does spread more rapidly than Delta, but it's a little bit early to tell. In the, in our previous variants, we might infect one or two people. If you are infected, you might infect one or two others. Early data suggests you infect six people. So much more contagious than previous variants. We're still learning about if the infections are different from Delta in severity, although the early indications is that this variant, this new variant causes more mild symptoms and less severe illness, but it's too early to tell that for sure. And then we're also getting more data about whether we have more reinfections or more breakthrough cases for those that are fully vaccinated. We're also getting more information about how effective our vaccines are against this. And when we talk about our isolation and quarantine information in just a moment, you'll see this. Our current vaccines are expected to prevent against severe illness, hospitalizations, and death. There are, that does not mean that breakthrough cases will not happen. We've seen that in particular for those that are not yet boosted. A little bit of bright spot, I think, is this variant was first identified in South Africa. In South Africa, the cases have peaked and are now on a decline. So if that's any early indication that we will see a really rapid increase in cases, and then we will see a quick decline after this increase. So I think the message there is that it's going to be a tough couple of weeks. January is going to be tough, and then if South Africa is any indication, and the UK will start to see a decline after that. So right after Christmas, the CDC surprised us all and updated their isolation guidelines. So I'll walk through that. And I'll note that this, these guidelines apply to the general public and not necessarily specific sub-populations. So the CDC is anticipated to give additional guidance for specific settings, including childcare. We anticipate that K through 12 guidance for schools is going to come out from the CDC this week or next week. For healthcare workers, this guidance doesn't apply, and long-term care facilities. So this is very, much so for the general public and not necessarily all sub-populations. So the new guidance says if you are confirmed positive, then regardless of your vaccination status, you stay home for five days. If you don't have symptoms or your symptoms are getting better, then you can leave your house for five days, but you must continue to wear a mask for an additional five days if your, and your fever needs to be resolved. So if you still have a fever after five days, you need to continue to stay home and isolate. So that's if you test positive for COVID. If you were exposed, and by exposed, we mean if you were within six feet for a total of 15 minutes or more within a 24-hour period, beginning two days prior to your symptom onset, we consider that an exposure. And for those people, it varies on, depending on your vaccination status, what your action item will be. So again, this may not apply to all sub-populations. If you are not vaccinated, or only partially vaccinated, then you quarantine for five days, so stay home for five days. We want you to get tested on day five. If you test negative, or you still don't have any symptoms and you weren't tested, you can return to your normal activities, but you can, need to continue to wear a mask for an additional five days. So five days at home, test if you can on day five, and then you can leave your house and wear, continue to wear your mask. If you were vaccinated, you're fully vaccinated, and you're eligible for a booster, but you have not yet been boosted, so you're vac, you're fully vaccinated, booster-eligible but not yet boosted, then you essentially are going to be in the category with the unvaccinated. You also stay home for five days. You get tested on day five if you can, and then you can resume your normal activities, but you need to wear your mask for the additional five days. And then finally, if you are fully vaccinated and boosted, if you're eligible, or you're fully vaccinated and not yet booster-eligible, and we'll talk about what that means in just a moment, but meaning that you are not, it hasn't been six months since you got your second dose of Pfizer or Moderna, then you don't have to quarantine at all. So you can resume your normal activities, but we want you to wear your mask for your full 10 days. And this is really based on guidance from the, from these early studies out of the UK and South Africa that says against this new variant, our immunity tends to wane, but is picked back up if you get your booster shot. So critical key point here is going to be for everybody that is eligible to do so to get a booster shot.
Can I stop you for one minute?
Yes.
Because I'm just kind of confused. Because I see the vaccinated and eligible for a booster but have not yet been boosted, and you got to stay away. But the other one says if you're vaccinated but not yet eligible for a booster, you don't have to stay away. I mean, I don't understand. Can you tell me the difference between?
Yes.
I mean, I just, that just, I don't understand.
Yes, it's a little bit nuanced here. So let's say I got my, I was fully vaccinated in November. I got my second dose in November. So I still have that sort of full level of protection. I'm not yet eligible for a booster because of the time.
So you're still strong?
I'm still, right, that's a great, I'm so strong, I don't need to quarantine again. So that's the nuance there. And for our, this is where it really kind of gets in the weeds a bit, but for our teens who are not yet even have a booster shot approved for them, so if you are under the age of 15, if you're 15 and younger, you can't get a booster shot anyway. And so if let's, you are six months past your, let's say you were a teenager, and you got boost, you got vaccinated in August, at, pretty soon, you're going to be eligible, you, it would be time, in theory, to get a booster shot, but you can't get a booster shot. So you are, you don't need to quarantine. So it's a bit different, and I'll note one piece that has changed here. Previously, the CDC guidance said if you had COVID in the last 90 days, then you don't have to quarantine again after exposure. They took that guidance out. That is no longer, that no longer stands. So they took that out because of the waning immunity. We don't know how long you are immune if you've had COVID yourself. All right, so, so this gets into what we were just talking about, about who's eligible to get a booster shot. So if everyone's 16 and over is now eligible to get a booster shot, and you need to be at least six months after your second dose of Pfizer or Moderna, or two months after your single dose of J&amp;J, so if you are booster-eligible and you fall in that category, we need you to get a booster shot as soon as possible. The CDC, in the month of December, also updated their recommendations for booster shots. They recommend Moderna or Pfizer as the best choice for a vaccine for most people, although that is not true across the board, depending on your own personal health conditions and what you may be allergic to, for example. And you can also mix and match. So that's been true for a while. If you got Moderna or Pfizer, you can mix and match that, or if you got J&amp;J, you can mix and match as well. But the CDC also said receiving any vaccine, including the J&amp;J shot, is better than being unvaccinated. So Moderna and Pfizer is what we would suggest and recommend, but if you, if you only have J&amp;J available to you, then you should get that. We are anticipating that there may be, emphasis on may, forthcoming expanded eligibility for booster shots for younger children, 15 and younger. We have not seen that go through the FDA's Advisory Committee yet, but that may be forthcoming. We've seen some initial sort of talk that that is forthcoming. And then we continue to have booster shots, as well as our first and second doses, available at the Health Department, Monday through Friday, and then we have a series of ongoing outreach events as well. So this week, we are expanding our testing days at the Health Department. We previously, just due to demand, tested on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We have expanded that to Monday through Fridays, so we've added a Tuesday and Thursday day for testing at the Health Department. We continue to have rapid at-home test kits and PCR test kits at the Health Department on, available on a daily basis. You can just walk in and pick up an at-home test kit, and then we also take those to outreach events as needed. We have more than 40 test sites in Cumberland County, and the state has a great website that you can go type in your zip code, or your city, or your address, and find a test site near to you. And then, of course, we have vaccinations available, including boosters, here at the Health Department on a daily basis.
What question?
Yes.
Sorry to disturb you. Those at-home testing kits?
Yes.
How reliable are?
So it depends on a few things. So we have the rapid at-home test kits.
That's the one.
Yes, the rapid at-home test kits. So they can detect Omicron, and they are fairly reliable. Where we want you to confirm with the PCR is if you are symptomatic and negative, we are less confident in those results. So if you get swabbed and you have an at-home test kit, and you are symptomatic, you have a cold, a fever, a cough, shortness of breath, loss of taste and smell, and you test negative, we want you to confirm that with a PCR test, just to be sure. And then the PCR at-home test kits, you swab yourself, and then you send those off to the lab for, and then you usually get the results back in a couple of days. So those are more, the PCR at-home test kits are more accurate than the rapid at-home test kits. But both will detect Omicron.
Okay, so whenever you go to the Health Department to receive your test, is there any test that you could take that receive the information back on the same day?
Yes, so you can do the rapid at-home test kit, and you get your result back in the same day.
Okay.
Yes, so usually you get your results back in 15 or between 15 and 30 minutes. Yes.
Thank you. You have another question from Commissioner Keith?
I can wait till the end, if you'd like.
That's really the end. I think the key points here are everybody that is age five and older should get vaccinated as quickly as possible. If you are booster-eligible, we need you to get boosted as quickly as possible. That's going to be key. And the CDC has really been emphasizing the use of a well-fitting mask. So that might be a procedure mask, like I'm wearing now, or a KN95, or an N95, and really you should be fit-tested if you're going to wear an N95, and then to get tested if you're symptomatic. So that's all I have, Commissioners.
All right. Commissioner Keith?
And apologize, Mr. Chair, but I've got a couple of questions. Obviously, it has become very popular in the last couple of weeks about, and I still think, is there, what test can tell you the difference between you having Delta or you having Omicron? Or do you, is everything we're seeing now pretty much Omicron?
It's mostly Omicron. You, as an individual, when you get tested, they don't, what we call sequence your particular test in a way that you, as the consumer, know that. Our state has their surveillance system, and they do surveillance, and they will run additional tests on your sample. And they, but they only do that for, they don't do that on every single test that comes through the state lab. And certainly, if you take an at-home test kit, it's not going to tell you whether it's Delta or Omicron. I believe in, in Cumberland, in the state, it's about 75% Omicron, although those estimates are varying. It takes a couple of weeks from when we start to see something, a new variant, and then a couple of weeks to really have that data at the state level. So there's a pretty significant lag time in knowing how much of a particular variant is in our community.
So to follow up with that, Omicron, it looks like, I know you were very careful on saying what the symptoms are, but it looks like it is less severe from what we see at the hospital.
Yes, that's what they were.
The incubation period is quicker, more quick. It seems to be in only a couple of days that people start seeing it as opposed to Delta. Is that?
I think that's true both for Delta and for, for all of our variants. So the, it's still, we typically are going to see one to two days prior to symptom onset when you're going to be infectious, and then primarily two to three days after, which is why you're going to see that shortened isolation period. Although, it could be up to that 10 days. So that's why I want you to wear a mask for your full 10 days. But most people are going to shed the virus or pass it on or be contagious in those first few days.
Right.
Yep.
Unfortunately, by the time the PCR test comes back, you may have, yes.
That's fair, yep.
It's got two more quick. So what I understand now, you're calling fully vaccinated, as is the CDC, only having your first and second shot.
So in effect.
But we're, but we're wanting everybody to get a booster.
So in effect, the CDC shift, they did not say this, they sort of shifted what it means to be fully vaccinated. But if you look on the CDC website today, it still says, fully, unless they updated in the last hour, it still says fully vaccinated is two doses of Moderna or Pfizer, or a single dose of J&amp;J. That is still the definition of fully vaccinated. But what they, in effect, did, when they changed the isolation guidance for those that are not booster-eligible but not, have not received their booster, they sort of put you in the category with the unvaccinated. So they didn't change the definition, they sort of shifted the guidance. Although, I wouldn't be surprised if that gets changed in the next couple of weeks, or they clarify what they mean to be fully vaccinated.
Yeah, and my final question is, or comment is, this is a lot for people.
Yes.
I mean, you know, I come out of the Walmart sometimes and forget where I parked my car.
Yeah.
And asking people to know all the difference between all this is a little, is a little difficult. But, so how can, do you still have tests available?
Yes, we have tests, yes, yes.
Okay, because we got a message that some people are, a lot of people are out.
So we have both, when I, we just started doing them again this morning. We had about 600 at-home test kits left when we walked out on, out of the office. And we, when I left this morning, they were still testing.
Okay. Well, how, where can a citizen go to find all of this within the county? Is it on the Health Department website? Is it on our Facebook page? Is it on our county website? All of this new guidance?
So we will post the slides for this after our meeting today. But we also have a press, we did a press release last week that have, has all the updated quarantine guidance and isolation guidance. And then we also have our, our testing information on our website as well. So the, our website is really the place to go, and then we'll push it out on social media as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Just when we thought we were almost done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is, I agree with you, it is a lot to digest, the new isolation guidance. And frankly, we are waiting for additional guidance from the CDC. The press release is really, that very short press release was, is all that has been disseminated. And as I mentioned, you know, their websites are not even quite updated yet. So this is all going to get, I think, updated and additional guidance pushed out over the next couple of weeks. But I agree, it is a lot to wrap your head around.
Thank you.
We'll go to Commissioner Stewart, and then Commissioner Booth. But I would just, as to your last question, I guess I'll go to the manager about the PIO putting it on the website on all of our stuff.
It's already out there. This will be uploaded after the meeting, but it's on the Health Department's website, but it's also on the face of the county's website as well.
And the Facebook and all of our meetings?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Stewart?
Quick question. You talked about the masks, the ones to get fitted for, and surgical masks that you have on. What about the shields that people are wearing? Are those not effective? I didn't hear you mention that.
So we do not count face shields as a substitute for face masks. So less effective than wearing a KN95 or a surgical procedure mask. It is better than wearing nothing, if that is, all that is available to you. But face masks are pretty widely available these days. So we would recommend that you wear a well-fitting mask and not a face shield as a substitute.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Booth?
Thank you for keeping us updated on this. And that probably is, I agree with Commissioner Adams, that stay away, wear five days, get tested on the fifth. If you, if you don't know exactly where you got exposed, if you're in a room at like a party or something.
Yeah.
I guess you hear about it, that Sally and Tim got it, and you know, you need to follow up. But when you do the drive-through, and they do the little double brain tickler on you, and they bring it out, does that one sample get tested for Omicron, Delta, 19, influenza? I mean, how, you just got those, you know, the brain-tickling pipe cleaners there. Now, what, how do you identify what it is the person's feeling bad about?
So the, let me think about where to start with this. So if, most often, or the lab that you're, that you, depends on where you go. So if you do it yourself, it's going to just test for, do you have SARS-CoV-19 or not. It's not going to tell you Delta or Omicron, and certainly not influenza. If you send it up to our state laboratory, they do surveillance on our samples, and then that's when they differentiate between, and not all samples, they differentiate between is it, is it Omicron, is it Delta, is it Alpha, which variant is it? And so they're able to tell that. The individual, you or me, are not going to, they're not going to come back and tell me this is Delta. And so some labs also will do a dual test, and we have this capability in some of our labs to run flu and test for COVID at the same time. So it'll be a sort of a dual test, and they'll say, no, this is negative for flu, but you're positive for COVID. So it kind of depends on where you go.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Green, quick question. I understand, I want to make sure I understood correctly, the information is being placed out on Facebook and also the websites?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other areas that is being placed out on?
So we typically do community presentations, so for different community groups, and we share that there. And Lauren, if you have any other places that you can think about, but primarily our website and social media. I also do WIBU, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and I do Goldie on Thursdays. So we also push it out through those mediums as well.
Okay. And I appreciate the efforts that are being made to get the information out there, but it's imperative that the citizens across Cumberland County understand what, what there, what there is for them in prevention and even aftercare, if they received COVID or whatever the other variant is. And I just feel, I've always felt that it's important to our community that we do this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And, I'm sorry, Sally, go ahead.
Yeah, the county manager just asked that I come up. We also have Channel 5, which is CCNC-TV, and we can do a quick infomercial. We've been updating our slides and that. So we'll So we'll use all of our platforms that fall under public information, social media, the website, CCNC TV. Anytime Dr. Green's doing interviews, we do have the media here today covering the meeting. So it'll be going out through that as well. And we'll be pushing out a press release that'll get picked up as well with that information.
Okay. Another quick question I have here is funding that we receive for COVID. Is that helping in any way of getting the information out? Or I just want to understand how are we using that? Because it may not, I'm not going to say it like that. I'm going to say it this way. It's important. It's very important. We have so many seniors, so many, so many people of color that are affected and so many people, period, that's affected by this. And it's, it's something that should be ongoing all the time. We've been truly blessed that we've had a little relaxation with it for a while. But now it's back at us again. So this should be a non-stop continuation of providing information that we have that will help our citizens.
And I can speak to the funding piece. So we have some COVID dollars that we're able to use for communication efforts. So for example, I mean, we haven't done it because this guidance, for this particular guidance, although we can, because it's, it's changing. But for example, we use some of our COVID dollars to do digital ads on Facebook and on social media. We've done radio ads. We have worked with Beasley Media to push, do some additional advertising. And we've done some TV spots as well to push the information out. And we typically target those ads in zip codes and census tracts with, with high, historically marginalized populations. So when we, we work with Sally and her team to geofence and to target those ads in particular neighborhoods that are at higher risk for COVID or, and other things. So we try to make sure those messages are targeted. And we can look at doing, this guidance is new and we want to make sure that we're getting and sort of synthesizing the language exactly right. But we can use some of those COVID dollars to push out information in this way, too.
Fantastic. And the reason I started naming different groups of people is because those are individuals, are people that CDC said that they were most susceptible to these variants. So thank you for, for mentioning that and doing that. Thank you so much.
Yes, we've, the state has a website where you can see which of the areas are the highest risk. And that's how we target the ads when we do either radio or TV or social media ads.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lancaster.
Dr. Green, I appreciate your presentation. One of the things that continues to concern me as well as a lot of my friends, we see a lot about vaccinated, unvaccinated, getting your booster shots and all that kind of stuff. And it seems that maybe a lot of people, and I say a false sense of security or just security, that now that they've been fully vaccinated, the need for a mask, there's no need for a mask anymore. And, and I have actually had some conversations with people and that's exactly what they tell me. Larry, you keep on wearing your mask if you want to. I'm not going to wear mine because I'm vaccinated. What kind of, I mean, how do we respond to someone when they feel that strongly? Now, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe the vaccinated part has helped those who were or were not wearing masks. And I guess what I'm trying to say, is there a need for people to still wear a mask when they go hearing everywhere and they've been vaccinated?
Yes. So the CDC's current guidance says if you are in a community of high transmission or substantial transmission, so that red or that orange, that when you're in a public indoor setting, people should wear a mask. And our state has done a good job of really pushing out this campaign about layering levels of protection regardless of your vaccination status, because we know breakthrough cases are possible. And so getting fully vaccinated, getting boosted, wearing a well-fitting mask. We've seen the CDC sort of strengthen their guidance about what kind of mask you want to wear. And then also, because it's still flu season, adding a flu shot to that layer of protection. So adding all those things together will help to, you know, protect you as an individual, but also of course, protect others in the community.
Thank you.
Dr. Green, thank you so very much for the update. I heard you on WIDU this morning. I hear you most mornings and then over on Goldie. So you're a little bit of everywhere and still the face of, of this county and that. We want to applaud you and thank you for all of the efforts that you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda. Anybody have any items to remove from the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor.
Oh, you don't have to do that. We, oh, here.
Voting in favor. Commissioners Lancaster.
It's unanimous, right?
No.
No, it is not. Voting in favor. Commissioners Lancaster, Council, Stewart, Adams, and Evans and Keith. Voting in opposition. Commissioner Booth. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to our items of business. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome our new Social Services Director this morning, Heather Skeens. She's going to be presenting an item for security services. This item did not go to the agenda session. As you may recall, we asked for permission from the board. If we have contracts that are time-sensitive between the agenda sessions and the meetings, we ask for your permission to bring them straight to the board. So this morning, I've asked Ms. Skeens to present this item. Good morning, Ms. Skeens, and welcome to Cumberland County.
Good morning. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to present in front of you this morning. I appreciate it. Thank you. This contract is in your packet and because it is a new contract with a new vendor, I wanted to just give you some information about North State Security Company, which is the new contract that we will be utilizing with your permission. The purpose of this contract is to continue to expand the security presence at our Ramsey Street Building and at our Family Resource Center in Spring Lake. And so we currently have one deputy there, but we need to expand that security presence because of the nature of the business of social services. This contract vendor was selected through the county's formal bid process. The contract does reflect a change in vendor from Universal Allied Security to North State beginning January 4th, 2022, through June 30th, 2022. Funding in the amount not to exceed $106,075.98 for this contract was approved in the fiscal year budget that was adopted through the commissioners. The contract also includes an option for renewal for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 in the amount of $217,056. And fiscal year '23 through '24 in the amount of $223,820.76. As indicated already, there are some additional heightened security awareness at our Social Services Building. And over the past 10, five to 10 years, we've seen a tremendous influence, unfortunately, on some of the need for an enhanced security. And some of those include workplace violence. So we've had several incidents at DSS where we've had workplace violence, not only from individuals coming in to the agency, but from workplace violence within our staff who have significant others who have come to the agency threatening our staff and the agency. We've had high-speed chases through the parking lot. We have an ATM in our parking lot that has been robbed on at least one occasion. We've also had some simple issues, although still frightening, through individuals overshooting the Ramsey Street exit and coming into our parking lot at high speeds. We've had keys locked in the car. We've had towing, additional towing from our parking lot. And those usually involve at least a deputy and one other security officer. And oftentimes, we have to ask Public Health to loan their security presence to us for some of those concerns. We have significant foot traffic through the parking lot for 24 hours a day. And of course, we have vehicles parked in our parking lot 24 hours a day. And we are also anticipating opening our first floor conference rooms in our DSS. And they really operate as a regional opportunity for training, for conferences, and are open to the public. And when we do that, it really becomes a conference center and we need additional security to monitor those 200 to 300 additional people that are sometimes in our building. And lastly, we have a couple of programs that we're getting ready to release at DSS that will increase our foot traffic in our building to include our low-energy assistance program and our low-energy water assistance program. That's a new program through COVID that will be opening up and will again increase our traffic flow. And so with that, I'd like to request the approval of our North State Security Contract. Appreciate any consideration and we'll be happy to answer any questions about it.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation. This, I am so glad to hear that security has been heightened there at the Department of Social Services. And Commissioner, our vice chair as liaison, I would like to see you, it's just a request. I would like to see you and the director and the county manager to talk a little bit more in depth about the security at Social Services. Because I think that, I think that scanning individuals from weapons and whatnot need to be discussed as well there. There are instances that has been reported that could happen and there possibly could be more. But it's. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we had an issue with the gentleman that came in while we were at an event at DSS. But I think that that's one of the buildings that we have in Cumberland County that needs to be heightened much more with security because of what that department deals with from time to time about family members and children and all of that. So I, I hope that you all will take that in consideration in continuing to increase security there. Thank you.
Commissioner Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heather, welcome. Welcome back to Cumberland County. I do have a couple of questions. I was looking through the contract and I didn't notice that, well, these, will these guards be armed?
It's my understanding that yes, they will be armed.
Okay. Same thing is, was there an issue with allied? Because it seems kind of odd that in the middle of a contract, or I don't know if it was in the middle, but this one's only six months with the, was there an issue with ally?
We've had some concerned about, concerns about the allied presence and their response to incidents at the, at the agency.
Are we voiding their contract?
It will, it terminated effective yesterday. We gave a notice to terminate their contract, which is why this was put on as an emergency to have this contract up and running hopefully by tomorrow.
Okay. And did this go through a formal bid process?
It did.
Okay. I didn't see it on the supporting information. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman Adams. Commissioner Evans is absolutely right in needing extra measures to guard against security. As a former guardian at Lydum, I know about the threats that come to our social workers, to the employees. You guys do a great service over there, but there, you also provide some services that cause people to be disturbed. And you're dealing with a community of people that have other issues. And I'm glad to see this come before us. But the need for security over there is crucial, necessary, immediately, because people's lives are in danger. They have received bomb threats, all kinds of threats. And we can't allow them to be put at harm like that when they provide such a phenomenal service to our community. So thank you. Welcome again. But thank you for all that you do and thank you for bringing us today.
Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, sir. I agree with the need for it over there and I'm glad to hear that they're armed. I've been concerned when, not necessarily county buildings, but going into other facilities where somebody's sitting on a chair about asleep. It almost looks like an old Andy Griffith show, you know. And, and if they get called, they're about 88 years old, about my age, and they have a flashlight. So I mean, you know, I, I just think that the, the show and the presence, whether it requires more people or at least additional signs saying these are, you know, these premises are protected by North State Security and stuff, I think will at least put someone on notice. It's kind of like saying, you know, hello, you're on camera. You always see the people about to snatch stuff off your porch, look around for the camera and they see it. They either go, well, I'm already caught, or they just kind of scooch off. So I'm glad to see it beefing up. Did we look at, my question is, do we look at the option like we do with the SROs about basically hiring a deputy that we employ but works for the Sheriff's Department and the school system? Do we look at that as far as beefing up actual law enforcement?
Heather, I can answer that. So they did an analysis and unfortunately, the Sheriff's Office does not have enough available deputies to, to cover the amount of security. So they have one deputy sheriff that's assigned to the Department of Social Services and one that's assigned to Public Health. And so there are two sworn law enforcement officers on the campus. And we are adding additional armed services through the contract agency.
Thank you. I knew they were, I knew they were, the department itself is, you know, greatly lacking in warm bodies. I was thinking maybe this might be one where somebody that was there, isn't there, might say, but I'd come back and work for the county. So anyway, as long as it was looked into, I, I just like the presence. I like actual someone walking by. You know, they just, if they're seen, they're, they may not, need to be called.
And Commissioner Booth, to your point, we do have large signs on the agency. When you walk in, that says this, this agency is monitored by security, security and cameras. And those security individuals walk our parking lots and the building to have a physical presence so that individuals see them walking the, the parking lots and the, the floors.
Very good. Very good.
Attorney Moore, for you.
Commissioner Booth, to your point also, under federal employment law, when we, if we use deputies that are on our payroll internally for like side jobs, all the time counts together. So it puts a person who's working a full-time deputy doing additional work in a overtime position at all times. So that's another issue that we have to be concerned about.
All right. Thank you.
My question goes to the manager, I guess, is that as we do this, did we do, look at the whole campus? I mean, you got the Health Department that sits right next door and these parking lots are together. So would we not, and I know we got to move on this because they expired, but would we not have looked at that whole campus as what we needed for security for the entire, for the entire campus?
So to your point, Commissioner Adams, it's my understanding that they work together. If there's, so there is a sworn law enforcement officer at the Health Department. But if assistance is needed, then those from DSS would divert over there as well. So they work as one campus.
All right. There's no other questions. Commissioner Lancaster?
Motion to approve the contract.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor? Well, she's got to do a roll call. Is this a roll call?
No, sir.
Y'all killing me.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Lord have mercy. I guess I've been out of this chair too much here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to nominations and I will go to the Vice Chair, Commissioner Stewart.
I'm listening to you. Oh, I'm sorry.
The nomination for the Civic Center Commission recommends the following. Mark Yarborough, Charles McBride-Grannis, Dr. Vicki Andrews, Greg Edge, and Joseph Quigg V.
Can we also nominate two others?
I would, not to do that. All of these were eligible for reappointment.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I mean, they, they, these aren't new people. They were all eligible for reappointment. But I mean, I'm not going to stop you from nominating, but I just wanted to make sure that we understood that.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Evans. That takes us to the appointments. Madam Vice Chair.
I would like to make a motion for the appointment of the following nominees for the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Our at-large nominee is Diamond Spain. The Human Relation Commission nominee is Jessica. The Human Relation Commission nominee is Jessica Black. Elmore Lowry. The Joint Planning Board nominee for the Cumberland County Board of Commissioner Pointed category is William Walters. For the Cumberland County Local Emergency Planning Committee, the nominee is, for the local environmental representative category, Amy Mateo. And for our Board of Health, the nominees for the veterinarian category, Dr. William Dean. Dentist category, Dr. Kinsley Momodu. For the registered nurse category, Cynthia McArthur Kearney. And our pharmacist category, Dr. Ojo. The engineering category, John Larch III. And the general public representative category, Jennifer Brayboy, Kiara Wade, Joseph Pfizer. And the Cumberland County Commissioner category is Commissioner Jeanette Council.
I can get a second on that? Second. It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Is there a closed session item, Madam Manager?
No, sir.
If not, I'll take a motion to.
Please let me make it since I have not been made a comment.
Yes, we have. I want you to adjourn.
I move that we, uh, adjourn.
Is there a second?
Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Council, if you don't mind, I would like to second that.
All of those in favor?
Unanimous.